They're doing foster care and foster care limits the number of childcare children you can care for. So there are a variety of those things.
Nancy?
Yes.
I just quick question. So when these numbers here, like when you said eighteen of those are eighteen facilities, right? That all have multiple children associated with that.
Eighteen closed, yes, is eighteen programs. So that could, most of those will be family childcare programs.
Which are ten, is that right? Up to ten or fifteen?
To ten. Very good, yes. And up to ten is the maximum. Many of our programs do not serve the full ten children.
Yeah.
Is a lot.
Yeah, just that's a hundred and eighty spots. You know it the most. So that's a fairly significant reduction.
Compared to the fairly significant.
Ninety forty, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, please interrupt me and ask questions so that I don't drone on and on. I put this slide up here because I think it's important to note that there are a variety of different regulations around childcare. There's licensing. As you were talking about, the family childcare means ten registered family, which is the base level of licensing. Yes, those caregivers can care for up to ten children. Only two of those can be under the age of two. Only six total can be under the age of kindergarten. And four of them have to be school age if they care for the whole ten. We also have certified family, which is a larger family childcare home. Typically, those have at least one staff person. And the, they could be as large as sixteen children, depending on their square footage and staffing and what age groups they're caring for. And then, of course, we have childcare centers. The Oregon Department of Human Services also has a process. They have an application and background checks and training requirements for any childcare providers who are serving families who are receiving the childcare subsidy. And they also have a new regulated subsidy process, which is very similar to registered family for those caring for DHS subsidy families and that are not related to them. And then, of course, we have exempt care. That's the family, friend, neighbor program. You know, that's you watching your grandchild. Those kinds of care and recorded programs, which is something reasonably new to the state of Oregon. Recorded programs are programs like preschools that are operating with serving only three and four year olds and only for four or fewer hours a day. Then those programs are recorded. It basically means that they've reported that they exist to the early learning division and that they've had a background check. But there are no other health and safety or teacher training requirements for those. Here's where the real crisis is. This is why we have so few places for children. It's the workforce. And I know this is a mantra from many, many businesses right now. But I wanted you to see currently there are approximately seventy-five to eighty openings in childcare programs. That's programs that already exist. It's a lack of qualified staff. I know that Kevin is here because of the issue that has happened in Thai Valley. And what happened there was that they, they were fully staffed, but their teacher left. The teacher was qualified to teach. The other teacher is not qualified to operate the classroom without someone else. Headstart requires associate's degree with a waiver, but the real requirement is a bachelor's degree for their teachers. And so they cannot have the classroom open until they have a qualified teacher. I spoke with them. They're, they're hard at work and trying to find a teacher. But until they can, they're operating on what we would typically call a home-based model. In other words, they're sending materials home for children. They're doing some home visits and bringing activities. And then they're having a time in the classroom where parents are also there. So they're meeting those federal requirements and doing some activities that way. As soon as they find a teacher, they'll be back up and running.
Excuse me, Nancy. What would be the normal hours for Headstart?
I haven't worked for Headstart for a while, but typically they run six hours a day. That's their new model is six hours a day. So even at that, it's not meeting the needs of all working families because most families, you know, you work eight hours a day, plus you have a lunch break, plus you have to get to and from. So it, Headstart is giving kids a great experience and a, and learning experience, but it's not quite meeting the childcare needs of our working families.
Thank you. Oh, and you wanted to know how many kids participated in Thai Valley when it was fully operational?
I believe they're licensed for eighteen. Kevin might know how many they were actually serving. But yeah, typically they're, they've been licensed for eighteen students.
And those are like three-year-olds?
Those are three and four-year-olds.
Three and twelve, thank you.
So this, this workforce shortage also affects the, our ability to find new family childcare providers. And it's a big part of that is the low pay. The lack of things like health insurance and retirement, all of those pieces that are not available when you're self-employed. And that's what a family childcare provider is. It's someone who's operating their own business. So it, it, it's a wonderful position. I did this job for seventeen years. I loved it. But I will say after I, as I get older, I miss having those years of retirement. But we're still working on it. This is something our staff is working hard on. And we currently in Hood River and the Dows have eight prospective new providers that are currently in the process. So we are hoping that they follow through and that will, that will help. The other issue is substitutes for teachers who have to be out of the classroom. There are no, we have no formal system for finding substitutes in our region. Currently, providers have to kind of find their own. Sometimes it's their spouse. Sometimes it's a relative. But those folks still have to meet all the training and background check requirements. Recently, Washington State, or Washington State, sorry, Western Oregon University, their Resource Institute was awarded a grant and they are working to put together a statewide substitute pool. So we're, we're very excited about this. I don't anticipate it actually being in full operation for another year. So. Okay. These are some of the legislative supports that have happened during COVID. There were emergency childcare grants and for those programs that continue to operate during the pandemic. And there were reopening grants for those programs who had closed but reopened within a certain period of time. And then most recently were the stabilization grants. Those were little larger grants. Funding for all of these grants was to be used as twenty percent of those, that funding was to be used in salaries to help to maintain the staffing as well as it could have been used for other expenses that they incurred during the pandemic. I know that I was asked to talk about the 2022 legislative recap and Commissioner Schwartz, I'll tell you what I know. So the big, I think, amount is talking about the omnibus budget. And so three point two million of that is going to hire thirty-four new positions in the what will be the newly formed Department of Early Learning and Care. The early learning division is moving to their own department. And so that is to beef up the staffing so that they will be able to function separately. There was five point eight million that was allotted towards a suspension and expulsion prevention program. We're looking hard at how do we keep children in childcare? How do we support those caregivers so the children are not bouncing from program to program? And then there were the supply and capacity building grants. Those grants have already been awarded. Eight point two million went to Neighbor Impact in central Oregon. One point two million went to Uville Cree in Ontario. Seven point nine went to United Way. And this is the one we're following closely, and that's twenty-two million in capacity and building grants. This funding is going to be funneled through seating justice to assure that the funds can get out in a timely manner. And they'll be focusing on rural programs, culturally specific programs, some of those. And so we're watching that closely to find out exactly what those grants are going to look like. And then twenty-one million went to Portland State University's Oregon Center for Career Development and Early Care and Education. That money is, is going to be providing two annual five hundred dollar recruitment and retention grants to staff. So that includes family childcare providers, centers, but each center staff person. This is done through their Oregon Registry System. They've done something similar in encouraging additional education. So it will go through that system. Programs that are, people do not qualify that for that. They, they have to work in a licensed program. And for the first grant, they have to have been working in a licensed program for at least three months. The twenty twenty-three grant, they will need to be working in a program for at least six months. And then two million dollars went to relief nurseries and two million went to Healthy Families Oregon.
So Nancy, can you, what does that mean for us?
Well, what it means for us, well, first of all, we do have Healthy Families Oregon in, in our area through the next door, so that will support additional dollars there. The, the Portland State University five hundred dollar payments are going to help with retaining staff that are currently working in the field. So I think that's going to be a huge support. And then our hope is that the seating justice capacity building, we're following that grant closely to see how that might support us. Obviously, Dan's going to talk a little later about Columbia Gorge Community College and their project and how that will increase childcare in our community. We're hoping that this grant may be able to support that, but also support other programs with perhaps remodeling an existing building or upgrading a building so that they can be used for childcare. So that's what we're looking at now. Of course, we will benefit from the suspension expulsion program. That's also going to help families in our area. And the Department of Early Learning and Care is going to bring all parts of early learning together into one department across the state. And I think that will increase our abilities to collaborate across programs, so.
Nancy had a quick question. Back to the stabilization grants. How, how are, who disperses that, those, those funds and how do people access them?
The stabilization grants were dispersed by the early learning division. Providers had to apply. There was an application process. It was fairly simple. And they, anyone that applied received a grant. I don't remember exact numbers, but they, they received a grant based on their program size. They also received additional funds if they were serving at-risk children. So children perhaps that are, families are using the childcare subsidy. They also received additional funds for infant toddler care, additional funds for odd hour care. So evenings, weekends, early mornings.
So it sounds like those have all been distributed. Do we have any idea how much of that was distributed to our region?
I would, I, we have about ninety-eight percent of our providers across the region who receive that grant.
Okay, good.
Those that didn't receive it are those that chose not to apply.
Okay.
And those were more related to COVID, emergency stabilization grants?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they were.
Okay, oh, one time thing.
Yeah, one, one, one-time funding. Childcare Partners also received a piece of that funding to support these programs in developing their business skills. So we are using our portion of that to work together with SBDC to provide some more specialized business training and supports to help these programs. Most people don't go into childcare because they love operating their own business. They go into childcare because they love children. So this, our project is to help support them in those business skills so that they can be more successful and continue to operate.
Yeah.
All right. So here are some of the barriers. Obviously, workforce is a huge barrier, but also space. I know that many of our current family childcare providers have looked diligently throughout our communities to find space to expand to a childcare center and they have struck out. So they're not finding usable space that currently exists. I know we have a lot of empty buildings, but so far none of them are really appropriate to put childcare in. And then that lack of funding to do any kind of remodeling or any upgrades that might be needed both to a family childcare home who would like to become a larger certified family childcare home or to existing facilities. The lack of a living wage, this is something we will always continue to talk about. Most childcare providers are living below poverty level. The average, the national average for family childcare provider is about twelve dollars an hour. So they're not getting rich in doing this. And with wages going up in all other areas, that makes those jobs look even more enticing. And then, of course, the lack of qualified staff. This is just a very small list of barriers, but this is some of the things that we're working with. The qualified staff piece. Childcare Partners recently hired Brian Brusco, who was an academic advisor here at Columbia Gorge Community College. He will now be our professional development navigator. He's recruiting for students for the Early Childhood Education Program with the hope of increasing our workforce.
Nancy, quick question.
Yes.
So the, the lack of a living wage. So I'm just, I'm, because as, and I have some other questions, maybe later on with some of the other materials we saw, but it's like, obviously you could charge more, right? So if there's a lack of living wage, you just charge more. More money comes in and you pay these people more. But obviously, that's, there's this whole situation where, you know, I guess it's, you know, you can't just charge more because people can't pay more. I don't know. It's kind of weird situation.
Exactly. It's, it is a weird situation. And it, providers could charge more and some do charge higher rates than others. The problem is that parents can't afford that. One of the biggest things we hear is the high cost of childcare. You've, you've heard childcare costs more than a college education. Parents can't afford anymore. We can't put it on the backs of families because they just can't afford it. There's a lot of compassion in family childcare providers. I would say that over fifty percent of them are probably giving families a break on their rates or delaying payment or some of those things because they're compassionate about the needs of those families and the needs of children. But all of those things in, in the end affect their bottom line as well. So.
Is there a business, like thinking about your, the idea of helping them run the business in a way? Is there something there that perhaps helps with this situation? I'm just thinking like, so for example, the family, the folks that are doing it. And may, I'm not sure I totally understand, but like the, the very lowest level, it's just a single person, is that right? That can care for up to ten children, of course, in all those classifications?
Yes.
I was just thinking like, okay, so if they're all paying, I don't know how much they pay, but I mean, it seems like it's based on the information here, you know, like eight hundred dollars a month or a thousand dollars a month or something like that. I was trying to figure out, I mean, there's, there's a fair amount of revenue coming in potentially. I'm just thinking of the business model.
Yes, we think about the business model and you think, oh, okay, you've got ten kids and you're getting anywhere from four to five dollars an hour for each child. Well, that's a lot of money coming in. But you have to remember that's the childcare provider's wages. That's covering the cost of food and materials and any repairs. It, when they can find it, liability insurance. So.
So you said, you said something, so you said four to five dollars per hour per child. Is that, did I hear you correctly?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, because that's, that's, that's part of it. That's the part of the issue there. Okay. I was thinking it was more like ten dollars an hour per child or something. It's like, okay, well, start doing that math.
Yeah, families, families can't have, can't afford ten dollars an hour. Providers are worth it in the actual cost of care is closer to ten dollars. The, the one piece of all of this legislation that I didn't talk about is they are working to increase the childcare subsidy for those families that are receiving that subsidy. That money goes directly to providers. Right now, they're getting, it pays at about seventy-five percent of the actual rates of childcare. The hope is that there will be some funding that can raise that to ninety percent, which also helps those lower income families have better access to quality childcare programs because they are able to pay the same amount as other families.
Now, I'll get to you, Dan, I promise. It's just, that's, that, that whole subsidy was what I was, you know, thinking about. But that's for low-income families, but it doesn't help middle or higher-income families. So.
Yeah, so. No, it doesn't. I, I will say that during the state of emergency, co-pays for families, because there's a percentage of the cost of care that families are required to pay, co-pays went to zero. They did raise the income limits for families to qualify. So all of those things were highly beneficial. Those have not ended, well, the higher income level has not ended yet, but may end, I'm thinking by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Okay.
That was helpful, but.
Yeah, that was, that was good. Thank you. I believe Dan would like to say something now. We're gonna let you speak, Dan.
I just wanted to expand on that one point and speaker, Mr. Akey's point about business modeling. And it really speaks to the challenge we have in rural Oregon. It's economy of scale. If you're running a childcare center in a metro area, you've got the economy to cover the operating, the overhead, the staffing levels. And that's what we don't have in small rural communities across Oregon. So that is part of the challenge that we've been trying to figure out.
So when, and I've heard you talk about that before, like what kind of levels are necessary to get to that? Maybe that threshold or something? Because it seems like what you guys are trying to do at the college, that's a big operation, relatively speaking, but apparently it's not big enough.
And that is going to be part of the strategy I'll be talking about in just a second. I'll page you both on this thing. Nancy, two hundred, something like that. And then you get into the related challenge. Where do you put it? And how, how broad an area are you drawing from to do that? And then you're getting down to the committee just for parents and hundred.
Yeah.
Doesn't work because of that.
Two hundred kids you're talking about?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Two hundred kids. That's, that's what you need.
That, that would be a huge center. That doesn't fully make itself sufficient, but it comes a lot closer. The, the smaller the program is, the higher the deficit. And finding those operational funds to support those programs is very challenging. And so that's what Dan is working extremely hard on doing is making this a community effort because it's going to take all of us to support a childcare, a new childcare center in our region. And it's needed. One of the things we hear quite often when we hear from families who are moving into the area is, well, where's your childcare center? Well, the only childcare centers we currently have have specific criteria. Either low income because they're Headstart or work for the hospital because it's great and small. So their, their options are family childcare. And that's not what a lot of families are used to. They're coming in, having been putting their children in a childcare center, which has a little more reliability because when a family childcare provider is sick, they have to close. A center typically has other staff that can fill in, so.
Thank you. Kevin, would you like to jump in here? Thank you. You've got your hand raised.
Yeah, I don't know what to say. I mean, this is a huge problem. I gotta say, I wrote down that twelve dollars an hour number. That's ridiculous that we're paying childcare workers twelve dollars an hour. I wonder what it would, how long it would take you to pay off a bachelor's degree student loan, making twelve bucks an hour and paying ten dollars an hour for your child to get watched.
Why are you doing that?
That is, that is truly insanity. And it's a vicious circle that we, that we are, have to fund, raise these wages up to make it very desirable for people to want to stay there. Because if we don't have the people to care for the children, we won't have the employees. I, I don't know how, you know, this, a lot of this has got affected from COVID. We set COVID money aside to help support this. I think every city that is part of this, this need should be doing that as well. And I would, I would highly hope the county could too. We've also made every exemption during COVID. I don't understand why exemptions can't be made for an immediate need right now. So I would, I would hope that can be taken back and up the chain and really pushed because this is, just hearing the math around this in the business models, this is more than a business model. This is about sustaining a future. I think I mentioned it in my email to the commission, but you know, one of the problems I face being volunteer EMS and fire is that we lack volunteers all around the state and all around the country. And a lot of it's due to this fact that we can't maintain rural communities. We can't contain the youth to stay here to, to actually give a crap in the future to want to volunteer. And it's, this is a huge vicious circle. So I'm willing to work however hard to get this done. Willing to continue to, to help advocate for this through the city and, and for funding as well. We have other monies coming that for infrastructure, but you know, infrastructure is no good if we don't have people staying around. So I, I just wanted to state that. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I do want to say I probably was, I misrepresented some things. The twelve dollars an hour is basically what a childcare provider, family childcare provider is probably making. I will say that Headstart employees are are receiving a reasonable are receiving a reasonable wage comparatively. But Head Start programs are federally funded. And so that gives them a little more more money to work with and keep wages where they need to be. But you're you're right, this the lack of childcare affects every aspect of a community. And I would very much like to work with you, Kevin, to see what we can find for solutions in the south part of the county, because it we know that it's a desperate need. Okay, just briefly, ways that you could help is one, raise the awareness and build support. Childcare is being talked about everywhere. This is the first time in the thirty plus years I've been in this field that I have heard government entities, community members, everyone talking about the importance of childcare. So it's a prime opportunity to really dig in and find those supports to make this happen. It could be with grants to childcare providers. Again, it's those facilities and usable supplies, all of those things that are keeping the cost high as well, not just wages, but a variety of other things as well. And supporting operational costs, that's that's the barrier for opening a larger program is those operational costs. Donating space, if you know there's a space and there's a space that could potentially be remodeled. Keeping in mind that all spaces have to have outdoor space as well, so. This is some examples of what's been happening in other counties. I happen to be a resident of Sherman County for many, many years. Sherman County has provided operational funding for their childcare programs in their preschool. Most of those dollars were zip dollars, but they've been doing this for for many, many years. Programs out there are scared right now because some of that funding is going to be going away. Multnomah County passed a a universal preschool measure. And through a lot of both philanthropic and other funding, Multnomah County is now provide gives access to free, high quality, developmentally appropriate, culturally responsive preschool to all three and four year olds. That's a big deal. Hood River County currently where childcare partners is working with Hood River County. And we've given them a proposal for our funds to provide us with funds to support the new programs, new childcare programs, helping them with the training materials, fire suppression equipment, all of those things. So they can get up and going and then also to support the retention of our existing programs, which could mean training, some of those kinds of things. So that's what's happening within our general area around county funding for childcare.
Nancy, just a just want to clarify. So when we talk about back to that twelve dollars an hour, like here locally, isn't it true though? Since we don't have centers except for maybe great and small, which is which is subsidized according to my, you know, information, but not. We're really looking at just the family caregivers is our our source of childcare for the most part. Because Head Start is not really childcare, it's preschool. And so we are really looking at that twelve dollar an hour problem here in this county, right? I mean, that's what we're dealing with, so then that vicious circle that Kevin talked about, so.
That's that's correct, the majority of our childcare in in our entire region is family childcare. We have a number that have moved to certified family, which has helped. We have some pro- we have some programs who do really well. But the programs that are doing really well are also usually serving our upper income families, not our lower income families.
Pay more.
Yes, because they can pay more. And also, we have to think about the quality of care. So we may have forty providers. But there may be some who are struggling to stay open because there are issues around the quality of their care. So that's something my staff work with providers, one on one, as well as in group situations. We have some intensive focused childcare network groups that meet on a monthly basis. They provide onsite support. But quality is an issue, so families. Childcare is still all about parent choice. And so what one family thinks is great care, another family might not, so. Families need options.
Yeah, Madam Chair, is some maybe is for Dan. Regional solutions involved with this at regional solutions level? Or is just the representative of re- regional solutions at the table?
At the table and looking for resources. H Dice is very much a part of the conversation, regional solutions coordinator, tracking the state funding. Waiting to see what comes out of CD justice at twenty-two million statewide, how fast and how far can that go? So the state resources at the table are a part of it.
So Commissioner Haye, since you're on that regional group, are they? Is this a high level conversation yet, or is has it has it worked its way up yet?
I would say it's not the highest level, no.
My point with this is that we're briefly touching on this at AOC. Nancy's wanting advocacy, and so where do we where do we get the ball rolling on this? And who do we talk to, how do we, because this is just not in our area that we're having this issue. And so so anyway, it just sounds like that AOC LOC needs to elevate this conversation with our legislature. And throwing a hundred million dollars at it is not going to fix it. It's a Band-Aid at best, and so that's kind of where my head is going with all of this. Nancy, you and your team have put together a monster, beautiful packet that gives us all the data. So so what I'm hearing you challenging me to do is move this data up to the ones that potentially could help us help us with this issue. So anyway, it's you know, because this is not just in this area. I mean, and local government and state and federal government all the way around the board. We don't have any mental health issue money, we don't have any behavioral, we don't have law enforcement, we don't have money for CTE programs. We don't have, and it's just, I'm I'm going on a rant here, but you guys are seeing where I'm going with this.
I appreciate that.
It's it's across the board and and as we as we as we all just looked and followed these election results last night and this morning, we've got to, we've got to start engaging somewhere. And how that's going to play out, I I haven't formulated that yet, but I'll write a book when I figure that out. But, you know, the economics of all of this is what we need to take into into consideration. And with that, Madam Chair, if I may indulge, Suze Riley is the executive director for the Chamber of Mopin, who's joined us this morning. And I just wanted to offer an introduction to the three of you. Suze and I met many, many years ago through a mutual friend and involved in motorcycling. And and I look forward to some in-person meetings now that we can do so. But welcome and thank you for joining us this morning.
It's a pleasure to be here. Yeah, nice to be here. It's humbling, really humbling to listen to this conversation and distressing.
Yeah, and Suze, I would I would love to meet with you and and Kevin both to just talk about what possible solutions are and and specifically what the need is in your area, so. That's part of our job, so absolutely. And Commissioner Kramer, thank you. Yes, this needs to be advocated at all levels. I think important that we advocate here in our own communities as well as the state and federal level. Everyone is aware this is a state and federal issue, we're aware that that the entire country is in this childcare crisis. I think a lot of effort has gone into trying to solve this, but a lot more work needs to be done to really make a difference at the ground level. I've added my phone number in my email, please feel free to contact me. I'm happy to answer questions, I'm happy to talk with other entities, whatever way I can do to help. So thank you.
Do you have more questions, Commissioner Haye?
I have more questions, I don't know if Dan, are you going to be presenting something to us?
He does that, I don't think you can see the chat, Jordan Belager has put in the chat, agreed. I'm a former Head Start Center Coordinator in Thai Valley and had to leave my position once I had kids because I could not find childcare for my own children.
Thank you for that comment, thanks Kathy.
One, maybe a question before Dan starts, so just looking at some of the other data, and I'm not sure whose data is what, but there's lots of data in here. So I'm curious about the differences between Wasco County and Hood River County. It seems like there's a significant difference in like amount of childcare spots in the two counties, and is there a reason for that? And is there more need in Hood River than there is in Wasco County, or is that not the case?
I actually haven't looked at those the numbers that you're looking at, but there there's still a need in Hood River County. They do have, what they have in Hood River County is they have a lot more of the large family childcare homes, the certified family childcare. And they have a few additional centers. There's been a lot of work happening in Hood River County over the last year or two. We had a couple of very large programs close. And we had one business operator who decided to take on that challenge. And she has opened comparable programs to the ones that had closed. So that has really helped the issues in childcare. So that that particular business owner, who's pretty amazing, is now operating three programs in Hood River.
I'm just curious, I mean, like you said, there's twenty of those facilities, according to this licensed programs data. Twenty of those in Hood River and only seven in the DOWs.
Nancy, is there an affordability issue affecting Hood River versus Wasco County?
Some of that is that it to be a certified family, your home needs to be larger. There are additional licensing requirements because you're watching a larger number of children. And again, it comes to the workforce, because most large certified family childcare programs have at least one staff person. So we continue to encourage family, registered family childcare providers to move up that next step. But it could it, there's a variety of barriers. One could be square footage or additional requirements they need within their home. So I don't have specifics in my head right at the moment, although my staff could probably rattle off twelve different things, but
It just, I mean, if you look at the numbers of again, I'm just looking at this stuff from December sixth of twenty twenty-one. But it looks like Hood River is just has more business related childcare activity happening. And in the DOWs, as you said, there's more like just single home family. I mean, it's it's completely opposite, but at the end of the day, they have nine hundred and four, according to this, nine hundred and forty-one total children served. And we only have five sixty, and my guess is we don't have that much less need. It almost seems like maybe we have might have more need, I don't know.
Commissioner Haye, my data shows that we actually have nine hundred and forty slots in Wasco County.
This was this, there was a couple presentations in there. This was one that was it had current childcare, I don't know.
Nancy, that may be from the feasibility study last summer.
Okay, all right, that explains. And those numbers may for Wasco County may not include the Head Start programs. Sometimes those numbers are included and sometimes they are not. In my data, those no those slots are included.
Yeah, I'm I'm curious to hear what Dan has to say, because obviously the college has this idea, this concept of, you know, basically that would add significant number of spots, I I think, to this to this market, which seems like it would be an amazing thing to do, and I know you're you've done a lot of work on it.
So we hope to do, Nancy, can you stay on the line and keep me on the straight and narrow here?
I will attempt to.
Well, before before we go to Dan, just just one second. I do want to really thank you, Nancy, not only for coming today, but I know that you're tired, I bet, from working through this pandemic. I can only imagine what your job was like as the regulations change daily, weekly, and working with each of those providers within your region to, you know, help them stay on top of things. So I just want to give you a heartfelt thank you for your work, I know it's not over. And my other comment, and this is probably just, you know, kind of uneducated, whatever, but it just seems like when we need help on an issue, whether it's mental health or it's childcare, what we see coming from the legislature is all this compartmental funding that is like, it's just got all these barriers. It's pretty darn obvious what we need. I mean, we need subsidized care. And we're, you know, what we get is money, twenty-two million going to an organization I've never heard of, for instance. And then we get a whole nother State Department forms, which may elevate, of course, the issue. But, you know, it just doesn't really trickle down to helping the families, it seems like, or helping people with mental health. It's always, you know, a million different programs, a million different applications, and it it's just frustrating.
Commissioner Schwartz, just briefly, I know none of us have heard of seating justice, but I think I can give a really brief explanation as to why those funds went to seating justice. It really has to do with the state procurement backup. It was much easier for them to give that money, funnel that money through seating justice, which is basically what's happening. Seating justice is the is the fiscal entity for those dollars. The application review and all of those things are still happening through the early learning division. But because procurement is so incredibly backed up right now, that was their way of getting those dollars out.
You keep an eye on those, Nancy, okay?
Oh, absolutely, Nate's watching them, Dan's watching them, so am I. And and thank you for accepting the fact that, yes, last the last two years were hard. For the first year, we spent, we called every single provider in our database every week. So that's the kind of contact we were keeping with those folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff's words to your point, Gombe River Community College would not be engaged in this conversation, we're not for Nancy Babbitt. She has been driving this, has been agreeing to resolve this issue, and I cannot say enough good news about her either. An honor and a relief.
Thank you, Dan, it has been my dream since nineteen ninety-five, and I always said I would, the center was going to be built before I retired. But we got to get this done soon.
Okay, I'll provide a little bit of background, how are we doing on your line?
We're way past time, so, yeah, we don't want to keep, we've got an executive session, we don't want to keep people too long waiting online, but. We're way past time, so yeah, we don't want to keep, we've got an executive session. We don't want to keep people too long waiting online, but.
I'll make it really quickly.
Thank you.
The thanks to Representative Bond, Representative Williams, the college has $2 million for four related projects, all centered around underserved, reaching underserved populations. A ECE, Coordinated Early Child Identification Coordinator, Spanish GED position, the Agricultural Technology Feasibility Study, and most of that for construction, designing construction of a childcare center. Those other three are on budget or significantly under budget. So we estimate at this time somewhere between 1.75 to 1.8 million to design and construct. A childcare center, fine, we can do that. We can look to additional resources. But to this discussion, how do we operate sustainably over the long term? So last night, the college signed a contract with Ossos LLC for a facilities master plan for both of our campuses, the DOWs. And remember, one, a big part of the scope of work at that FFP is going to be identifying a location for a childcare center at some scale, including the outdoor playground parks. Do we renovate or do we build new? We have the option of doing either one. Probably on the campus. It couldn't be any place in the DOWs, so keep that in mind. The focus of that is a practical site for the early childhood identification program. So that focus on workforce, trying to at least address the workforce issue, the training, and trying to address also the wages benefits that go into that to recruit a professional certified workforce that stands a higher wage level. We have until June of 2024 to expand those funds unless we request an extension. Now, it gets complicated. We've been approached by an Clunkin Medical Center with the idea of merging Great and Small with what we're doing. Now, that gets us a lot closer to an accounting scale with 116 slots and a waiting list at Great and Small. It also does not align with the June 2024 expenditure deadline for those ARCA funds. You're not going to be able to relocate a hospital by that. The other factor that comes into it, what about the school district with the bond measure in May 2023? So those are some things to remember on this. We're trying to keep in mind that life effectiveness. Where I'm going with it now is probably the best strategy that we can come up with right now and still beat that ARCA deadline. Is to build something smaller, focus on infants and toddlers. That's the greatest need. And try to tackle that sustainability operational issue head on, and it will require external support. We don't have dollars yet on the operational costs. We're still trying to take these different elements and put them together. But right now, focus will be on a smaller facility focused on workforce recruitment, infants and toddlers, and building into that operational model to see what we can come up with and keep that sustainable. Down the road, more of a phased approach. So looking at Moplin, looking at Hood River Cascade Locks, but not with Columbia Grove Community College leading that charge. We approach Columbia Grove ESD. They are considering and will consider some sort of an operational role down the road. But as far as the college is concerned right now, let's design, construct something on a fairly small scale, and then phase it down the road once we know where are those external factors that kind of need better. MCNC, School District, ESD Campfire has been another one. Based in Portland, they're interested in expanding after-school programming in Hood River and Wasco County. We don't have anything in the DOWs for after-school programming. So that's a discussion we've facilitated with the school district and the ESD. And campfires are interested in extending that. That's kind of another part of this equation. Throwing a lot of stuff at you, but right now, our focus is to design and construct something on a fairly small scale and focus on workforce training.
What does that mean, fairly small scale? I mean, talking about.
2,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet, one to two classrooms, focusing on infants and toddlers.
Okay.
How many?
Yeah. Numbers of.
25.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Nancy, Josh? I'm here, Nancy.
We have two classrooms, one infant, which could have a maximum of eight children, one toddler. That program can, that classroom can have a maximum of 10, so we're really only looking at 18. And that's the most needed type of care, but also the most expensive type of care. Because of the high staffing ratios.
So we start off with the hardest one and try to find a way to operate that sustainably, and then bring in older age groups, 3K, once we have that initial group of concept. Which I had all those answers figured out, yeah. MCNC is not a healthy impact on this. If you look at the preliminary map that you presented for the new campus, a grander or two, there is no doubt.
Interesting. I haven't really saw that. Wow.
And the dentist has told us on more than one occasion, two calls with myself and Dr. Crone, they would very much like to merge their small, our operation. But for us to try to design something like that and build that now without knowing where we need to go over build, we could go to other combinations, other funding sources, take the 2 million, 1.8 million that we have now for part of it, build something a lot bigger for what happens if that doesn't help.
Right.
Then, then we have a massive operational risk. So we have to be careful about the scale.
Wow.
What about, I, yeah, I don't know. You guys have looked at it 10, 10 ways, I'm sure. I was thinking like, why don't we start with the easiest operational element? And then as opposed to the hardest one, thinking that that might, you know.
But it's the greatest need, infants and toddlers.
Yeah.
And if we can, if we can resolve that one, start it on a fairly small scale, so 20. Fewer. And then expand it. Maybe just three classrooms. If we use one of those, then we expand it into three. With 1.8, we can, we can do some, we can do some construction with 1.8.
Anything else?
The feasibility master plan will be, will have a really read on that within a couple of months from our process. Of a fast scan of the existing buildings. We have a, another Article 11G request in the state, 25.5, I have. This could be part of that down the road. But right now, we have the ARCA.
Thank you for that update. Steve, did you have anything?
Thank you.
Really appreciate everything and your energy and your passion, both of you.
Nancy.
And you, you too, Dan.
Yeah.
I really, really appreciate your work on this. It's, it's not easy. It just, it's not an easy task to take on, so good luck with everything.
If you're reading, somebody else will be doing it.
That's right.
We figured it out. Yes, it is, to Commissioner Kramer's point, it's all a real work. There isn't really a good successful model of rural childcare.
All right. Thank you both.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay. Okay, I think we'll go ahead and move into executive session.
Do you want to hear any of the other comments that were made?
Oh, I'm sorry. Were there more comments?
There were. Deputy Ferrer said she totally agrees with Kevin's comments. When business models don't work for a community, governments have a critical role to find other solutions that will work. It is worth mentioning, this is Jessie Rose, is worth mentioning that with Head Start being federally funded and free, childcare in South County, it has created a lack of incentive for anyone else to open. You can't compete with free. So while Head Start does not meet the local need, at the same time, they just, they prevent other entities from starting up. And then she goes on to say, thank you for considering this important issue. It is truly a crisis for many families in the South End of the county.
And who is that?
Jessie Rose.
Jessie Rose, thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Kathy, for monitoring that. I can't really, can I see?
You can't.
Okay, all right. Okay. Bye, Dan. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm so glad you printed that because I expected you to be at home, so I didn't print it out.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure which I was going to do, so I decided to come in, so. All right, at this time, the Wasco County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.66028 to consult with legal counsel and ORS 192.6602E for real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session in person or virtually. All other members of the in-person audience are asked to leave the room. Those attending virtually will be placed in the virtual waiting room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and invite the audience to return to the room.
Okay, before I start moving people to the waiting room, Tyler, what staff should be here for this? I assume Jill should be here. Kristen will be here.
Yeah, Jill needs to be there.
Okay. Okay. Well, it would be nice if I could figure out how to make them go into the... Oh, there they are.